At this time, we'll call the July 18th meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission into order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, so help me God, say I do, please. We need to approve the minutes from the June 20th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Weathers, second by Mr. Ash. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I think we can move straight into new business today and start with the site plan for the Aldi Warehouse Parking Expansion.
Yes, sir. This is located at 2080 Aldi Boulevard. This is kind of an amendment to their parking lot that they've had approved in the past. They've added a few more, or they've changed the location of a few spots, but the site plan meets requirements. Staff can recommend approval of this.
Would we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this project? Please come forward and state your name for the record, if you would.
Mr. Bennett Hall?
Yes, sir.
It's a new development for parking. We're basically relocated some parking, same kind of impervious area. It's just kind of better for the access on the site.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here else, anyone else here to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
Answer my question, sir. He just did.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve from Mr. Noakes, second by Mr. Renfro. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion will carry. We're ready for the site plan, the Salcat Training Facility.
Yes, sir. This is located at 299 McCrory Road with minor technical corrections. Staff can recommend approval. This business will be on a form of public sewer. You know, the applicant is on the August 5th Sewer Access Committee meeting, and that is to request sewer service rights to be released by the Sewer Access Committee for this site because of its commercial use in nature. We have the first right of service for this property, and if we release that, that will allow the Water and Wastewater Authority to serve them on a step system. We don't have an issue with step systems in our service area, but the bylaws of the Sewer Access Committee states that anything that's not considered single or two-family dwellings has to be either released or set up on our public sewer for that corridor. So that'll work out that issue. You will notice, if you look at the site plan, it's a substantially taller building we typically have allowed. They do have a BZA request for this use for the height of the structure, and then the, what was called out in the BZA case was the structure needed to be set back substantially to create a buffer from the residential properties they've committed to. The building is 100 feet off of any property line.
And that went before Boza yesterday?
No, that went before Boza in 2024. I don't have the exact date. I apologize on that, but yeah.
Okay. And what are the, does this building have to be sprinkled, Christopher?
That'll be a fire marshal concern. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I would sure there's probably some sort of fire suppression system in a building of this height, I would assume.
I don't think there's any water down McCrory Place is the reason I asked that question.
I don't know how they're getting their water at present. That'll be worked out with Gladeville Utility, but I mean, they are gonna have to have water to the site as far as the suppression system. I'm assuming that's gonna be a capacity thing, but.
It's fine. Okay. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
My name is Jamie Gillespie with the engineering firm James Plus Associates, and this is.
Danny.
Yeah, fuck.
It's okay.
I know who you are, and I just went wrong. And then we also have the architect and the construction team here with us as well. From the questions that I just heard, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. We have been in contact with Gladeville Utility District, and we are working on providing access to. The dorm room structure will be sprinkled. The tall classroom building, training room building, it doesn't have to be sprinkled based on the code, but we have to provide the fire flow requirement for it, and we're working out those details currently. And so whether or not it will end up being sprinkled or not, we don't know that at this minute. The intent would not to, but it assumes we would have enough fire flow for a hydrant and a fire protection there for that.
Okay.
And I guess I'll hold off. If there's any other questions about the operation or what they do there, I'm sure he would be glad to speak on that.
Absolutely. And if y'all have any questions, just let me know. I'll be more than happy to explain, but what we are is we're a lineman training center. Power linemen, substation technicians, and underground technicians. It's an apprenticeship. It's a Department of Labor-approved apprenticeship. We don't charge for the education. As a matter of fact, it's earned while you learn, so we pay these young folks while they're getting their education. Their health insurance is covered and benefits as well. And in three and a half years, four years, they, what we call, we graduate them, we top them out, and now they've become journey-level workers. And we partner with folks like MTE and TVA, and we work on their properties and help with their training needs as well. The schematics, the pole lines that we have, these can sometimes change on the property as needed for training purposes, but everything else is as you see it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Want to have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
For Chris primarily, and these guys, I have a couple for you as well. If you go back a picture there, Chris, you've stated that, and I'm assuming this drawing shows that it's a sewer connection, whereas if.
No, the hatched area to the north of this site is their, or the, not to the north, to the, it is to the north. To, yeah, the squared area, the hatch squared area to the north side where the 840 and McCrory Place coming in, that's their proposed soils area for a step system.
Oh, so it's already been planned for.
Yeah, they're in the process of working that out.
Afterthought after whether or not, because you said.
I don't know. They've been working through that because they've reached out to, their first, their first target was to reach out to the city of Lebanon to get capacity off of our sewer line. There's not a good connection point for this without them having to run hundreds of feet of infrastructure for that. So since that's not working out, they've went, they've started conversations with the Water Authority about.
So it's planned.
An onsite step system. Yes, sir, it is part of the plan. Yep.
And your training, you said you moved poles around, so I'm assuming they're sleeved so that you can pick them up and move them for a different type of transfer?
Yes, sir. We use bigger derricks, and you know, we just dig a hole and then fill it back up to remove the pole from that area and move it somewhere.
So are you transforming in from TVA 141, $500,000? What are you training on?
We will have our own self-contained energon system that is built on a Siemens platform, and we use our own because for safety reasons. Our systems that we build shut off in millimeters of a second, so you go phase for phase. You know the power is there, but you're not gonna get hurt.
So you'll have an array of rack and breakers and that kind of thing onsite? That kind of thing? Very familiar, just question. Yeah. Okay, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Reason for the height of elevation is because you do some indoor training, I guess.
Yes, sir, because we don't have the luxury of, you know, we'll bring everybody in to train. They're working in the field. We bring them in so often. We don't have the luxury of training outside to stop the training, so we bring it inside.
Yeah. Make sure.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Well, motion approved from Mr. Renfro, second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion will carry. Thank you, sir. Ready for the final Willow Landing Phase 5?
Yeah, this one took a little bit to get here. This is formerly Phase 3. They've submitted a re-phasing plan about a year ago for this development, but this is now Phase 5 with technical corrections. Staff can recommend approval. This plat has been amended from the original submittal that you all were mailed out from 48 lots down to 33 lots, and that was to match the approved preliminary that we have on file. We had discussions all last week in depth about following the approved phasing lines and the reasoning for that, but they've worked out the issues with the, with West Wilson Utility about getting an easement through them to satisfy their concerns so they don't have to come back through with a re-phasing plan. But they have amended it down to match the phasing plan that you all have approved.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir.
My name is Matt Lawrence, representing Reagan Smith. Like Chris said, we did phase it down to 33 lots to match the preliminary approved plat, and then added, West Wilson was agreeing on just adding an easement out to Cooks Road for the water line connection out to Cooks Road. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any, or.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir. Just one from Chris. Approval was predicated on the 48 to 33 lot, and that's what.
Yeah, I would, whoever makes the motion, I would just make it that it's for the Phase 5, the 33 lots that are part of Phase 5. They did submit for 48 lots, but that, if they wouldn't have been able to agree to those corrections, we would have probably recommended denial of this plat because it doesn't match our phasing plan.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
No, wait, brother.
A motion to approve, sorry, subject staff recommendations from Mr. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion will carry. Thank you, sir. Well, we have a preliminary for the Kevin Burke property on Saundersville Ferry.
Yes, sir. Give me one second. This one is unique. This plat meets requirements. We went back and forth with the surveyor, Mr. Curry, on this. It is unique, as some of the proposed lots that you'll see, they actually cross the public right-of-way. Now, the part that's crossing the public right-of-way is on the east side of Saundersville Ferry, and it would be the lakefront property. Those portions of the property are the small portions on the east side of this plat. Those are deemed non-buildable, and no structures will be permitted on those particular lots. Now, the overall acreage of that is all gonna be added into the parent parcel. And if this makes some of you uncomfortable, I mean, we went back and forth with Mr. Curry on this. We can, we can work out some of those issues, and if it needs to be deferred, I'm happy to work further with Mr. Curry on this. I do want to note that there's lots 5, 7, and 8. Is that correct? They have, there's a significant, it's a man-made pond that goes through the middle of this, which is, it'd be right here on this plan. To accommodate that, that is where the road frontage access for the lots are, because we require all lots to have 50-foot of public road frontage. Those lots will not have access through that swell. There is an ingress, egress, and utility easement to the north of this property that accommodates lots 3, 5, and 7, I believe.
Are those the non-buildable lots, Chris?
No, these are all buildable tracks, but we're not allowing driveway or utility easement through this swell just to, just to not interrupt any sort of natural drainage flow that currently comes here, because right here is a man-made pond, and then there's a natural drain that comes out, and then there's a current pond that is holding water right here that all this flows to. And that was just to accommodate some of the concerns that we had on site with the natural drainage of the property. They still have their legal road frontage. We're just not allowing them to physically utilize it. I do need to note that Commissioner Breeze had sent me two emails. I'm not gonna read these into the record, but I do want to note that both of these are in opposition of it. One, and both of these residents live in the Overlook Drive, off of Overlook Drive, which is the community to the north of this. One is Jennifer Turnhoon, and then the other is Gary and Vicky Morgan. I just want to let you all, make you all aware that there were two letters of opposition, but since they are not here, county attorney has guided me not to read those into the record because they are not under oath.
Can I ask why we're creating lots that are non-buildable?
The reason that I'm creating them that are non-buildable is they're, they would be substandard lots if I made them separate lots, and they're wanting them all physically attached to the lot. So if you look through these, like, there's a Lot 1, the non-buildable track that's associated with it, which is the same width of the road frontage across the street, is considered Lot 1A, but there's no setbacks on that lot, and it's, there's no structures permitted per the regulations in the plat that I've required Mr. Curry to put on there.
Which is to the right of Saundersville?
Can you show the non-buildable lots?
These are all the buildable lots on the west side. All of these right through here are the non-buildable lots. And they are, they vary in size. I think the largest one is maybe a half acre, but some of them are like a tenth of an acre because you gotta think the one that's in front of this Lot 7 here is 50 feet wide by 60 feet in depth, and it touches the core property on the east. So this is not touching any other adjoining property owner. It's core property that it abuts. I think the reasoning was they wanted to be able to advertise these as having lake access, which, that's a bluff there. I don't know how beneficial that'll be, but it's gonna tie it to all these lots when it's drawn out.
Is there a homeowner association that will look after those lots and keep the mow and that sort of thing, or they just go?
No, sir. There's no homeowner's association required with this. There's, those lots are also un-mowable. I don't think you could physically mow those lots.
Life, isn't it?
Yeah, it drops off significantly. I mean, you're probably, yeah, you're probably 80 feet to the water from the road there.
Okay. Please come forward if you want to speak on the case, sir. State your name, please, for the record.
Yes, I'm Dan Curry, Survey of Record with Curry Surveying, also Crockett Surveying. The main reason that those lots are there is that farm existed before that road was there. And so that's the reason it's not core property technically, and so there's nothing you can do with them. As we've said, everything to the east of that road is non-buildable. All the lots to the west are all buildable. They conform to all planning and zoning requirements, but we have to do something with this residual land that was already existing prior to the road being there. So that's why it's kind of different in that situation is because the farm is already there. So that's why those parcels kind of exist in the way that they do, and we're just trying to correspond them. As Christopher said, Lot 1, it's Lot 1A, they're gonna be sold altogether, but they're not gonna be, as he said, we're not permitting them to have any type of structure built on them.
Well, if you can, how much land is there if you combined all them together?
I'd have to do the addition very quickly, but I mean, very small. I don't even think it would be much more than an acre.
But it might support one.
It's, the topography is not gonna support anything. You cannot do, you physically couldn't build anything over there.
But the motivation is to let them go with the adjacent lot.
Correct.
So they can actually touch core property.
Correct. And I'm, and again, it was just, it was, it's unique in that sometimes it's a situation when you get old farms, property like this, and they put a road through it, and there just happens to be a sliver of residual property over there. Now, Mr. Crockett did, Mr. Jerry Everett's, which you can see below lot, I believe it, I can't tell. Jerry Everett's, now his, it's the same situation there, but that particular property was over five acres, so it did not come in front of you all. And it's the same situation with that property. It's not buildable. He can't do anything over there, but it's just residual land that was originally part of this. It was the Everett Farm at one point in time, and so it's the same concept as that one.
But none of your lots meet any threshold for acreage, even if the topography was proper.
Correct. Correct. The portions, the A lots, you are correct. Everything to the west of the road, all conforms to all planning and zoning requirements. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any additional questions from our board?
Quite a few, Mr. Chairman. Flags that are on the front portion that you're not gonna use for driveways, so those three lots in the rear that are flag lots, since they're not using the property, well, one of them would be, I guess, since it's not going through the pond, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would be a normal ingress, egress. The other two, which are not normal ingress, egress, have a pond. So theoretically, the two lots that are flags could restrict people from coming to that built-in pond and enjoying it because it's on their land, the way you got it drawn.
So elaborate again for them.
So you got two flags coming in off the highway that go to the rear properties, the rearmost.
These two here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And their access is not there, but around the ingress, egress for the utilities.
Correct.
So, but yet they still own it because you're selling it to them.
Yes.
The flags.
Yes.
So now they could be, if they're not nice neighbors, they could say, hey, that's my pond. Don't bother me.
Unfortunately, the pond's really onto that lot, too, so I mean.
The pond is currently dry.
The pond's dry, yes.
And I know there's building restrictions, but what if they wanted to put up a gazebo or something that wouldn't meet your requirements?
Well, we're not.
Or be required to have.
We wouldn't permit any structures in the 50-foot access point.
And/or they wanted to walk across from neighbor to neighbor. Are they gonna put up fences and not allow them?
Well, they, they can very well put up fences, but I mean, it shouldn't.
I mean, the design just seems obscure because they're coming in and around the other way.
Are you talking about like if this neighbor right here wanted to put a fence across this property?
Or just restrict access on his land.
Well, that's, that easement is going to be recorded in the, on the plat?
No, sir. The flag that runs all the way to the highway.
Up right here.
That's their property.
It will be their property, and they can do with it as they wish.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. So it's in the middle of two other properties that, to me, could be restrictive if the guy or girl is not nice.
Then it'd be trespassing, that you, correct?
Yeah, it would be, and I don't know, it just looks, maybe you could redraw it and put the land with somebody else. And lastly, you said that was about an acre or less for those over there on the side?
I haven't added them up. I was totally speculating.
I think it's, I think if you add them all up, it's roughly 1.6.
Florida beach property, and I own a house down there, and I've bought that land. This is sort of like beach property, just 80 feet off the water. So you walk on 1A and I own it, is that my private beach access or quote-unquote, even if I want to fish 80 feet off the water? But you, I don't want you to fish 80 feet off the water? Would it not be more prudent to combine these properties instead of restricting it and just let the community use it? That's a rhetorical question, just.
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to the, I mean, I'm following a direction of the developer, and yes, I mean, I wouldn't, I would move the direction.
I know, it's not your decision. I'm just, those are notices and, and.
Friend I talked about, yeah, it costs people to donate or something, but obviously, it's up to the landowner as to what they decide, but yes, I mean, I think they're, they're certainly optioned. This is just how it was presented to me to draw it up.
And you like this drawing, Chris?
No, but I mean, it meets all the comments, and I can work with it.
Thank you for the honor.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we know, you know, divisions aren't always perfect, and then things can, you know, if we needed to go back, we can, but the, from what I understand with Christopher is that meets all planning and zoning requirements.
Okay. No more questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from our board?
Yeah, why?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
We have a motion to approve based on staff recommendations from Ms. Weathers. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Noakes. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
That motion, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. You're a no. I'm sorry.
I'm a no.
4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We have nine people. We have three noes and six yeses. That motion will carry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are we now ready for affirmation plaits, Christopher?
Yes, sir. Four affirmation plaits this month. The first is subdivision of Lot 1 and a re-subdivision of Lot 15 on the John and Ann Isel property, formerly known as the George and D. Billy Patton property, and this is 7485 and 7551 Poplar Hill Road being map 111, parcels 11.13 and 11.18. Second is the re-subdivision of the Thomas and J., Thomas J. and Patricia Carr property, lots 1 and 2, at 780 Greenwood Road being map 104, parcels 42 and 42.02. Second is the minor subdivision of the Rawlingsley and Meadows property located at 1819 and 1821 Hidden Ridge Circle being two lots on map 50G, Group A, parcel 8. And the last is a subdivision portion of Eric B. Hoagland property at 14170 Central Pike being one lot on map 101, parcel 40. All these, I believe the majority of these meet all requirements. There's one, I think we're still waiting comments on, but it'd be minor technical corrections. Staff can recommend approval of all affirmations.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Thompson to approve. Second, I'm sorry, Mr. Ash, I apologize. Second by Mr. Jewell. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion will carry. Christopher, do you have anything else?
Yeah, before we get to the public comment portion, I just have additional points of information. There's two things that are kind of actively going through zoning, so you all will see zoning resolutions here, maybe one next month depending, but in the next kind of months. The first is a PUD ordinance, rewriting the PUD ordinance to fit the county. It's gonna be more strict in some instances, and it's giving a little leeway in some other instances with acreage size and minimum lot size on that will be discussed as well. That's going through a very rough draft version. Will be presented to Planning and Zoning Committee on July 22nd, which I believe is next Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. And then the second ordinance we discussed with BZA yesterday, they've had a slew of height variances come through them, and there's not a ton of consistency on how those are being handled of yet, so it's a little bit of direction on cleaning that up and adding maybe some thresholds on height variances going forward so they're not having to lit any of those cases. And then the last thing I've been, Mike and I have been in talks, he's not here today, so this may come up a little bit more next month. There's been, BZA state law specifically states that alternates are to be appointed to the board in case of an absence or illness by any member on the board. And it calls, Boza, and it calls that out. The Planning Commission and the organization of that, it does not call for any specific alternates. It calls out that the county mayor is a member of any planning commission, and they can elect an appointee for their specific position, but as far as an appointee that can step in in the absence of a normal voting member, there's nothing in state law that says that's there. It also says that they're not, but I feel like if they genuinely wanted that in there, it would have been specifically outlined, similar to how it is in the makeup of the BZA board. So there's been conversations of maybe having an appeal come from this board to the state legislator to amend the TCA regulations to allow alternates for planning commissions.
That would be a wonderful thing.
But that's, I'll have a little bit more discussion with that and Mike, but that, based off my discussion that I've had with Mike so far, he feels like the most benefit with that if that came directly from this board, from the Planning Commission itself.
Christopher, do we need to speak to the litigation coming up?
I.
And just acknowledge it, or?
I can, if you want me to just give you an update on it. I think, you're talking about the zoning litigation, correct?
Yeah.
As far as the zoning resolution that amended lot sizes, it doubled all the lot sizes in the county. That case is set for July 28th at 9:00 AM for the first day of court, and I believe that's gonna be in CK Smith's court, if I'm not mistaken. And then if there's a continuance, it's also going to be the Tuesday, July 29th at 9:00 at 9:00 AM is where it'll pick back up. I will let you know that Mike has filed for a motion of dismissal on that case. Um, I don't know how that outcome will come, but it'll be heard July 28th at 9:00 AM will be when it starts.
Do you have anything else, Hugh?
No, sir. That's all my extra points.
State law does mandate that we open, uh, our meetings for public comment. Uh, at this time, we will do that if anybody wants to come and speak to us about anything wasn't on our agenda today.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Ken Young. I live at 1221 Shop Springs Road. You should all have, uh, two documents or two sets of documents. One, uh, starts at the top. It says Wilson County Planning Commission Meetings, and the other one is from the state of Tennessee. I'm here this morning to offer a suggestion for process improvement. And previously, I suggested revising the planning office's application, and that was well received. And then I suggested that only a vote of the full planning and zoning committee, not just one member, can initiate action here. You might recall the ill-advised attempt to reduce lot size in A1. That was not by vote of their full committee. And today, I am suggesting that there be a process created to verify that actions necessary for certification have been accomplished prior to a plan being deemed final. I believe there are usually eight signatures on a final plan. I'm saying that a signature by itself is not enough. So let's take a quick look at the Wilson County Planning Commission Meetings. That's one of your documents. That was on July 17th, 2020. Uh, Ms. Weathers was chairing that meeting, and, uh, Mayor Hutto was the secretary. On the second page, you'll see, uh, item number nine, the final for the Heritage Highlands Phase. And the next page, you'll see, um, the Heritage Highlands Final, just a little excerpt from it. You'll also see, uh, one of the eight signature blocks, and that's the Public Sewer System Certification. In that one, it says, "The public sewer provider hereby certifies that it has obtained the appropriate state wastewater permit for the public wastewater system to serve the building lots." So my suggestion is that supporting documents be filed with the final plan. And this would simplify research in how the final approval was granted. You know, we taped these meetings, we use a court reporter, we approve the minutes, but I can't find a paper trail to support, to support certification. In this example, I searched the planning office, the deeds office. I used an artificial intelligence assisted document search, finding no evidence of a wastewater permit. More importantly, the office that issues these permits at the state of Tennessee has searched and has not found it either. Now, I'm not saying that there is not one, but nobody has found it yet. And if there were a process created where this kind of document was included in the final file held in the planning office, it would make research much easier. So for instance, if there's eight signatures, and, and one of them is a permit that you should have for the sewer system, one of them is a surety bond for the roads, you know, $400,000 or whatever, you could go to one location, and that would be the planning office in the final, uh, plan folder and see everything that supported those signatures. That's my suggestion, and I will answer any question.
Anyone have any questions from Mr. Young? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You don't have anything else, Christopher?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will stand adjourned.